We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to get your booth, Jeanne, first?
I do.
Board members in public, I'd like to introduce our state representative, Jeanne Pocky, who's visiting us tonight. And she's going to be reporting, who is it first on the agenda to speak to everyone? Thank you for coming.
Absolutely. I know that this is, I'm not sure how this will work, so I'm going to talk to you guys. I thank you. I'm just here because I wanted to be able to come and see you all. Usually in February, the superintendent and some of the school board members will go to a meeting that the Southeast Co-op has. I'm not sure if you all take the opportunity to do that, but those that have, I usually see people there. And I just wanted to thank you for the work that you do. I know that being a school board member, you are responsible for people's children, and that is the most precious commodity that people have. And sometimes that can lead to some discussions. So I appreciate all you do and that you're here. I just want to congratulate you on a good football season as well. I'm glad that to see good things happening in Leroy Oslander. And I appreciate the work that you do. So it's what I'm here to say and do. And I did pass out some information. If you have any questions, concerns, issues, suggestions, I'm happy to take those and encourage you to pitch out and let me know what you think. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanne, one thing is, you didn't get a chance to meet Tim.
Yeah, I just came in.
Hello.
Hi, Jim. Nice to meet you. Thanks for coming.
Mr. Chair, can I make a statement too? And before you comment, the legislature has projected a $1.3 billion surplus. So please think of us in rural Minnesota. And we also have a contact in common. Clark Johnson was a professor that I worked with at MSU for three years. He was on the Higher Education Committee with you.
Well, thank you. Nice to see you.
Yes, and I won't take any more time because I know you've got lots of things and Bethwell's to get to.
Next, we'll move to approval of agenda. And I think there's one change for sure on personal items be .5 nighttime custodian. We want to change that to a full-time 1.0. Is that nighttime too then?
I'm not sure exactly how Tim wants to work with that.
I would say nighttime, yeah.
Okay. So we'll change that to a 1.0 nighttime custodian. And I don't know if there's any more changes or additions. Does anybody have?
Just my report, Mr. Chair. I'll take care of that.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the one change to the custodian.
I'll second. Motion by Pat and Justin, second? Okay. Justin, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next, we have public input. Is there something missing on three or is it just an error?
It just jumped down.
Oh, okay.
Three was the agenda.
Okay. Oh, I see. Yeah, you're right. Is there anything on public input, Justin?
Nobody signed in, no.
Okay. Next, we have recognition. Do you want to do that or you want me to do that, Ray?
I'll bet you.
Okay. First off, we'll start. Marl County Farmers Mutual donated $100. That, is that to a specific organization? Or is that go right into FFA? Okay. Oh, it's all for FFA?
Yeah, the first year of FFA, yeah.
And ZOTUS donated $155 to the FFA. The Leroy Community Foundation, $350 donation to Cardinal Pride, and $250 for Operation Success. And next is from Tiffany. Thanks for the countless donors that helped offset the FFA Ag Mechanics Team cost to the National Convention for 2019. The team was 11th out of 45 teams. The team conducted a letter-writing campaign to earn funds to pay for the costs associated with the convention for lodging and registration and more. Thanks to all the generous supporters, donors who gave money, monetary funds, to the FFA during their corn drive that was held on November 5th. So that's a thank you from the FFA. So is there any other recognition that anybody would like to bring about that we want to hear out? Okay. Do we need to approve the donations, right? Yes, I think we do.
I think we do. We usually do.
Yep. So, anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve all the donations as listed.
Okay. Motion by Cassidy?
Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next, we got approval of minutes. First, let's just start with the October 22nd. If there was any, if any omissions or errors. I guess I, when I read through, I didn't see any. That looked corrected to me.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 22nd minutes.
Motion by Teresa?
Second.
Second by Angie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. And then we got the November 19th meeting minutes. Any concerns, any omissions or errors?
I'll make a motion to approve the November 19th minutes.
Motion by Pat?
Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next, we got approval of financial reports. We'll start with the December bills. So have you figured out how to use that?
I have. I have figured out how to use it. It's cool. I'll just scroll slowly and if that gets too big, you can...
If anybody has anything on their mind that they want to just point out, just point it out. There is one doubling that I caught.
Yeah, we already took care of it. We voided it out and redid it.
Okay.
If you want to stop or slow it down, just please let us know.
Yeah, it's getting kind of quiet.
And I had a chance to review it and I didn't see anything that would be...
I got a question on S&M controls. $1,600 for recovery. So what happened to, did a disk get damaged or something they needed to recover? Or what, maybe you don't know.
It was, I do know. It was Tiff's hard drive or her memory card.
Yeah.
And all of it was destroyed. And so they had to do computer programming. I'm not technical with that, but it was to recover all of our files and pictures and videos from, I think, years.
And it's costly to do that.
Yeah, I know it is. I figured that that, something had to have happened.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just didn't know what. And because, yeah, I know that can get expensive.
And Mr. Chair, that's where we're trying to monitor more closely about the technology department so those kind of things don't happen so we have more up-to-date computers available for people.
Sure.
Oh, matter of fact, if I don't mind, Mr. Chair, your iPad had to be replaced because it was too old for them, for the level we're using it for now.
Right, at the...
And I didn't want that to happen to you.
I don't know exactly how, what occurred with it, but I know that it was a lot of very important things to be concerned with.
And if I could also, I've had similar things occur in other schools previously. And that's about, I don't know, that's in line with what it caused.
Right there, Crystal. Get back up. Okay, I want to point out on the BSN Sports, that top 41796 was a repeat bill from last month.
Yep. Yeah, we caught it. We voided it out and redid it. So we caught it and took it out of the system.
And it, the check, obviously.
Okay. Hold it. That 4,000, Ray, is that for that, is that for the L&M? Is that, does that have anything to do with that automatic test kit? Or is that just all?
No, that's just what it...
We're the real pair.
Oh, okay.
Because Tim lies in discussing test kit during my report.
Oh, okay, okay.
Crystal, go back up. Keep going. Keep going. The Southland, the music one, we actually approved last month. And it's on this month's.
Right, because this is the, it was a November hand pay.
Correct. Okay, that's right.
Because there were hand pays that were paid after the board meeting because they're hand raised. And so you can't differentiate dates. So it's all of November or none of November, basically.
So...
Right there. The 56028, that was the check that we voided out because it was on the previous BSN report. So that was the double. So that one got voided this morning.
Gotcha. Well, if anyone's got any questions or...
I'll make a motion to approve the December bills.
Motion by Pat?
I'll second.
Second by Cassidy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
I abstain.
Okay. Tim and Pat abstain.
Teresa abstains.
Okay, next we'll move to the Treasury Report and Bank Reconciliation. So I guess we'll turn it over to the...
Well, I didn't have time to post it, but everyone on the panel here should have a copy of it. Let's take a look at it. And I should, I will be getting these posted hopefully tomorrow. So they'll be up for everyone else to see.
Any questions? Well, if not, I guess we'll look for a motion to approve.
Make motion to approve.
Motion by Justin?
Yes, for the November Bank Reconciliation.
Yep.
Second.
Second by Angie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next, we have budget summary.
Also handed out copies of this. A little more in depth, but have a look at it.
Under the 400 series for supplies and material, fuels, 442, oh, Mel's leaving. Oh, no, that's Jane. We're at 183% of budget. What all is actually included under fuels?
Fuel Leroy. Just fuel Leroy and there's fuels.
It looks, it looks like the budget is only for $1,000. So...
Yep, nor at a...
And what is, what is that, what is that budget?
That's what my question is. Yeah, under the 400 series would be 442 fuels.
Yeah, it's, there's...
There's a couple different, there's a couple different fuel ones.
Yep.
For heating the building and then for transportation.
I thought it was transportation.
So, um...
But...
I just want to double check that the coding is correct on those. I think for the heating bill, I have hit it on utilities.
Yeah, it could just be a, but what fuel would the school use where you'd only buy $1,000 worth in a year? You know, because any, any school heating would definitely be higher.
Yeah.
And any transportation would be...
Maybe propane, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm thinking, just in coding, if you look back at the last previous two years, you know, it's been around, you know, the 30, 300s. I'd have, we'd have to go back and look at the budget activity for that.
Up to 1.
And that would, that should all go under, so...
The beginning of fuels, sorry.
Activity report tomorrow, Crystal.
And just check your coding.
And just check that. And I, I have reached out to help with that. Yeah, I can, I know how to do that. Yeah. I can compare it to other years. We can take a look at that. It could just be a coding thing. Or depending upon what it is, I have to still tell.
Okay.
The actual detail at the time means that if there was some change in the system, that means that if it is going to cost this year and then you have to do, then you do revise budget. Would that...
Adjust it, yep.
Adjust it.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, too, I would, I'm not familiar with the Minnesota coding for transportation because a large field we contracted, so we didn't have a separate line for fuel for buses. So I'm not familiar.
I have a question on the equipment purchase. It'd be five, line item 530. So would that, we had to put in a new water heater in the kitchen, didn't we? Is that right?
Yes.
Would that be most of that $4,600?
It was covered, something was covered by, Tim, you would know, wasn't it? Covered by warranty, that water heater?
Yeah.
I was just going to say that that water heater was just replaced not too long ago.
But it was still within the two-year warranty.
Okay. So how much of it did they cover? Did they do the whole thing then?
I don't know. I was going to go out there, that went out. Price was there.
Okay.
But I know a problem, the storage tank was not circulating. So the water heater had to work extra hard to make hot water for the entire building.
Okay.
Because that pump, the connection between the pump and the water come apart.
Oh.
So the pump wouldn't turn. We got that 560, was not regulating the pump, so that hasn't worked as hard enough.
So do you guys know what that $4,600 is? Probably not, I don't, we checked for it.
We'd have to pull it in the system. I've got it circled. Then I'll come in and talk to Crystal and Kelly and get that pulled.
Yeah, okay.
And I do know they came in from Minneapolis for it, but it shouldn't be that much of a transportation charge.
Some left for the boiler also?
Counseling.
Is something for boiler parts? Because we had some parts for the boiler. I wonder if they got put under that? Yeah, it's under equipment purchase.
Well, it, well, it could be. It could be.
And I think I coded the snow blower under equipment purchase.
Oh, okay.
But that was...
I think the paint spare tube for the football line was under equipment.
Oh, yeah. That would have been $2,500.
Yeah.
Previous issue.
Yeah.
Well, those two items alone, the snow blower and the paint thing, is that really almost that $4,600?
Yeah.
So is there any more questions by anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly budget summary.
Motion by Teresa?
Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next, we have student activity accounts. Teresa, you were going to ask a couple of questions about...
I did. Kelly, I know when you were working on Mel, did you get a chance to ask the couple of questions?
Um, about the...
The, where, Mel, you might have...
Yes, for the Deer Creek, was that?
Deer Creek, yep.
Deer Creek and Adidas.
Adidas, yeah.
We talked about the Deer Creek and I am missing some detail from one of my deposits from early October, was it? And I'm thinking that's where it is, but I don't have the backup for it. So I'm going to try to locate that yet.
Okay.
So I'm thinking, because that's about the right amount of dollars.
Okay.
And for Adidas, we don't believe we've received any money from them at all.
There haven't been any activities.
So nothing, possibly? Okay.
Have you heard anything from Adidas?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I was just going to comment. That's something we were beginning to discuss now about that contract and how beneficial or not it is for us. And we're looking into that to see what the status is. So we have not, as a matter of fact, we talked about it this afternoon prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Well, I tell you, you know, one of the big benefits of that was the bleachers then after what Nathan and...
Nathan took care of it.
And we got them bleachers for next to nothing.
Yep, and he just had another set donated. They were aluminum ones that can actually now go on the football field for the opposing side.
Yeah, they just...
So there's two more.
They just went and got two more up at Eagan the last weekend.
Inver Grove Heights.
Or Inver Grove, okay.
Advanced Recyclers, yeah. They had a bunch, Nathan does business with them. They had a bunch on hand and he had two left. So these are complete aluminum with a protective netting around the top that Nathan's got to weld a couple of little pieces back on and they're good to go.
And they basically were donated?
All was free of charge, yep.
Just had to go pick them up?
Yep.
If I could, Mr. Chair, the whole principle, Sean Kennedy, Activities Director, and I had a meeting earlier today discussing the status of that contract and whether it is or is not beneficial for us to continue and if there's an opportunity for us to opt out of the program.
Okay, okay.
And for that, we have to check to be certain.
Any discussion? Any questions?
What's the deal with the music department?
I'm guessing that's that trip to Florida.
The 365, is there a deposit for the Florida, for the Disney trip?
I thought that they were allowed to have a negative balance though.
Okay, but, okay, so we wrote Southland a check for $39,000 last month, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so why does the disbursement only say 365?
Because it's not, it's not all in yet. They haven't turned it off. They're staggering off their payments. So like there's another music payment due for the kids in January. So then, you know, we'll come in another deposit. And then all of their fundraising money just came in.
No, but what I'm saying, the dispersal... No, but what I'm saying, the disbursement, we, we sent Southland a check for thirty-nine thousand.
Right.
Okay, so shouldn't that show the thirty-nine thousand and not the thirty-six five?
Oh, yeah.
Or is there something, or is there something?
It was an offset, and I know we've sent the Evergreens a check as well, but I'm not.
Okay.
We can check.
Yeah. But I know that, I know that they already, they were gonna be negative because they had to pay, it's not like they're, they're making, they're allowing the students to make payments. So, I think that was, I don't know if it was approved, I know it wasn't here, but that was the arrangement of that. She told me, it's gonna be negative, and then it must come in.
Okay.
So.
Would you know anything, Mel? Maybe not.
I, I don't think there's, at board meetings, there wasn't any discussion about that. I really gotta make sure that the year end, that it's not negative.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I think the information was late getting out to the kids to collect.
Okay. Were we gonna say something?
No, just stand out weird.
Good. Check it out.
You wouldn't see what's going on.
Okay. Any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the student activity reports.
Motion by Tim?
Oh, second.
Second by Cassidy, any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion carry. I would like to add one thing, and I'd like to thank you, Mel, for coming over and helping out with that today.
Definitely like to thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it took us almost, just a little shy of six hours today for helping me, so she definitely helped.
And I thank Mel for helping out for a little yesterday, too.
Yes, she did.
No, thanks again.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, next, we'd like to add, we'll move on to personal items. And Hannah Losi would like time off for FMLA, January, starting January second, for six weeks.
Approximately the second.
Yeah, approximately.
Whenever the baby comes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Hannah Losi for six weeks of FMLA.
Motion by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Pat, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, aye, any opposed? Motion carry. Uh, next, we'll have a, a full-time, one point oh nighttime custodian. I guess basically it'd be a custodian for whatever he's needed, he or she.
Correct, and if I could, Mr. Chair, like, Tim, why, you'd like to comment on that, like, you need that full-time person.
Well, it would help a lot, especially games, set up, tear down. And then, like, right now, we've got one day long for radical reasons, so, for one. And she doesn't do this, she might go home, too, doing down the nut.
She did.
She might go sick.
Yeah.
Well, who do you got? You and?
Me, Bryce, and, uh.
Tracy.
Tracy, yeah, who's new. She went home sick today, so now there's nobody here.
Okay.
It would, it would help out a lot, we have another one. She's done setting up and taking down games, right here, they're done, same guy.
Yep.
And plus, we have the pool, we gotta do something with, too.
What we had, too, is gonna be very difficult to fill because SNEC is advertising for a custodian, they can't find one, so I would like to advertise for it. I'm not certain we're gonna be able to fill it because the job market now.
Yeah.
It's so, I'm wondering, it's so low, it's very hard to find people for many positions, but I'd like to ask the board possibly advertise for that one, hope we can fill.
The other three we have are all full-time.
Yes.
So, this would be the fourth full-time.
But that's bringing us back to having another one we had a few years ago, right?
Yeah.
So, we're not adding staff, we're returning to what it was here prior to my arrival. And for a school this size and student enrollment, it's not out of our, to have that number of custodial staff.
Yeah, I don't remember ever having, I don't.
In the last eight years.
But this position would be just as needed, or are you thinking every day of the week?
Probably every day of the week.
Every day? Okay.
It's, it's a lot of building for two people. And especially, as somebody said, for the games. And trying to get all done out here by ten-thirty. This game doesn't end until nine. You're gonna run.
Mr. Chair, I had to ask the basketball coaches to have the team help to clean out the gyms afterward because of lack of custodial help, and I don't like to do that.
That probably don't hurt many of them.
No. Not even liability wise, boy. Liability wise.
I think which one it is that the kids all come out and clean the gym when they're done.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Grand Meadow.
Do that.
Grand Meadow.
I think Glenville might.
Glenville, yeah.
Maybe with some of the discipline, you could hand brooms out. I can't do that, Mr. Chair. That, that was outlawed by Minnesota Mexico Legislature, it's punitive punishment.
Really?
Yes, it was.
Just out of curiosity, what are we looking at a cost for this position?
I'd defer to Mr. Tim Wai approximately.
Just out of curiosity, what would, do you have any idea what salary would be?
Probably around twelve or thirteen something like that, would it start solid out here?
No.
Doesn't Tracy start out at fourteen sixty-two? I think so.
Yeah.
But she has degrees.
Okay.
She's got three years.
Your first step is thirteen twenty-one this year, your first step one, that's somebody no experience.
Okay.
So, a full year is two thousand eighty hours, so that's just under twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. That's just salary.
And, Mr. Chair, I brought it to the board, and if the board is interested in buying it, notify it. But I hate to lose them the weight that we have if we have people that are ill and she's doing double reading.
Yep.
She's done a decent work. Have we used a temp in the past to fill in for long-term absences?
It used to be some subs and stuff like that on board. And I think actually, once I knew it was some.
It seems like one.
Oh, Austin, there was a temp service.
Yeah.
Are they readily available, though, when you need them?
That, you'd have to check with them, you know, where years ago, to see, you know, what they do for staffing services.
Yeah. If we approve a point five custodian. So, would that just be a wage? Would there be, there's no benefits tied to a point five, right?
Correct.
Right.
Correct, cause it's not.
It might be harder to find a point five, though.
We could explore it, board, and see what our results are if we advertise.
You know, I can understand, Tim, you know, when you got extra, you need extra help, and you got somebody sick and all that.
Yeah.
But when you got, everybody's healthy, then you got extra personnel, so where do you, where do we, which, where do we draw that line, you know?
What I would like is just, there's somebody to help set up games and deck it out.
Yeah.
And I like to be physically conservative, I was not aware of the numbers previously, so if the board is interested in no additional for a point five or one, it's your choice, and maybe our, our, our truth in taxation looks pretty good, but there's no point in spending money. So, if the board would be interested in point five, I think we could possibly try to work with that.
Is there a program, we, something we could do with, with some of the high school students? If they would take responsibility to help with the games and do some of that you're talking about? You know, could we do that?
We could explore it, Mr. Chair.
Cause I think that would be good if, you know, some of the, if some of the, uh, high schoolers that don't participate in those activities, you know, if they made it. It's like, my boy Tanner's ref on a couple of games tonight, he's making a little money doing that, he's happy to do it. And it seemed to me that maybe there would be some kids that would go for that.
But even like Pat said, the expectation that you clean up the bleach, or help clean up bleachers and stuff, it should, I mean, for one, you would think people in the stands could just do that. But I know that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Um, but if, even if, I don't know, the kids did it after a game, if, if everybody went over there and picked up two pop bottles and a bag of popcorn, they'd be done in less than five minutes.
Well, Mr. Chair, why don't, why don't you let us explore other options and see how things work out, and then see if we can go from there at the next meeting? Or unless you want to approve a point five, whatever direction you want to go. Cause I'm open.
Well, I'm, I'm open to anybody that wants to make a motion or suggestion, I guess, otherwise we'll move on, if we can table it.
I'd like to try it, like Angie said, let's see how it goes. I mean, you know, like you said, you have kids, you've got enough adults, you know, can we not at the end of the game, you know, can you please pick up your stuff?
Make su, I mean, the garbage cans are out there, if we, it's a matter of putting another garbage trash can in there.
Exactly, doing, let's try some other things first.
And saying, and any one of us can tell a kid, pick up your trash, I mean, come on.
Yep.
Well, I can talk to Mr. Hungerhold and Sean Kennedy tomorrow and talk to them about trying to find some alternatives.
Okay.
If you'd like to pay.
And then bring it back in January, and let's see how it's going.
Yes.
Tim, do you need help before that, since we're short staff, other than just games, or is it just games you're worried about?
Well, again, if somebody's sick, it is, but otherwise, it's me and the games.
And the game night.
I like Steve, I, Steve's idea, too, if there would be a student or something that would be interested in that for a little extra.
Yeah, you know.
Like we did over the summer.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
You know, there, there could be two or three students willing to come to the home games and.
Yeah.
And clean up after, if you.
And set up before.
Yeah, and set up before, absolutely.
I can explore it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, then.
I'll make a motion that we table it till the next meeting.
Okay, motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Teresa, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carry. I guess we move on to old business, we don't have anything listed, there isn't any old business, no, please. Uh, no business, designation of identified official with authority for the Minnesota Department of Education, external user access recertification system.
Except that there is mud.
Tongue twister. You can take over for that one.
The Minnesota Department of Education, MBE, requires that school districts annually designate an identified official with authority to complete the MNIT Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standard, which states that all user access rights at Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identity official, identified official with authority will assign job duties and authorize external users' access to MBE security system for their local educational agency, their LVA. The board recommends to authorize Ray Arsenal to act as the identified official with authority, the I or WA, at UROSC under school district zero and four and nine-nine dash one. And this system is, Melanie would attest, and other people, is very difficult to work with right now, because the last time I talked to Melanie at the state, there were a thousand people that were not on, and it took me two weeks to get on, and when I do get on, it's, there's a queue and I get bumped off, so it's a real disaster area. So, I'd ask for your approval, and it's taken sometimes a week or two for me to get into it and designate people as, as the back and I, and I'm having trouble right now. They bumped Mr. Hungerhold off, and I have to get him reassigned to everything the next few days. That's what this is about, but they, they changed the database, the whole thing, and that's what they're making us, that's the problem I'm having. And I imagine you run into some of that in Southland also, problems.
Yep.
Yeah.
Had to redo it there, too.
Yeah. Okay, so that's what I'm asking for me to be that, the division.
I'll make.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion, unless there's any more discussion.
Motion by Teresa. Second by Angie, any discussion?
Doesn't this have to be a roll call, bro? Or is it okay?
I don't think it's a.
I can't remember.
It's not a.
It's not a resolution.
Okay.
It's not a resolution, so it shouldn't have to be.
I'll just, I'll just curious.
No, that's all right, I understand, I don't believe we've done a roll call the other year, so I got through this.
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next, we move on to truth and taxation, we have a presentation. And so, um, Ray prepared, or had someone prepare this for us, so I'll let Ray.
Uh, for the last three years prior to my arrival here, we had Baker Tilly, uh, advisory, they used to be Springsteen, that did the financial work, the school districts, you're probably familiar with them now, also.
Heard of Springsteen before.
Yeah, and now, it's now it's Baker Tilly, so they put the report together for us. First page, I hope I have the same order, you do, you're signing at one, I'm at thirty-two, so that's a little bad, if there's any, oh, I'll just read up here. Yep, so as you can see then, this will include the background of property tax levies, legislative changes effective two thousand twenty levy, information on school current funding and district budget, proposed taxes payable in the year twenty twenty, estimated impact on taxpayers and Minnesota property tax refunds, finally, public comments and questions, or if it be the different areas of the board, this one will be here, so.
Say, Ray, I'd like to, one thing I wanna add for every public is, this is on the website. If you go to district, uh, updates, this is under updates, so you can read it there.
And as we go through the report, just a very short comment, the levy's actually gonna be reduced, and one of the reasons for it, we'll get into later in the report, but we shouldn't have it, compliance with taxpayers, because there are not gonna be increasing taxes in any area. So, we'll start with background of property tax levies, the truth in taxation law, do you want me to read everything?
No.
No.
Yeah, go ahead, if you have a question, ask me, cause I could, last board had me do it once and then let them once, so you probably are familiar with it. Yeah, now, go, move kind of slow so they can look it over. Levy cycle comparisons, then if you go to the next slide down. Background of property tax levies, and this spells out what's going on there. Okay, then we get to levy cycle process, the background of property tax levies. And this is a little bit nudity, because it was different from state to state, so I've had, this is the third one that I've worked with, Melanie's probably pretty familiar with it, more than I even. The authority for school levies, school districts' tax levies must be.
Can you, uh, let's back up, I just wanna point one thing out.
Go ahead.
So, oh, no, go to number seven.
Seven.
Okay. School board adopts a proposed levy in September and holds a public meeting in December to finalize levy, so, you know, just so people understand a little better, all government entities adopt their levy in September, and then when you get your proposed levy in the mail, usually in November, that's what's proposed from the, from the proposed levies we do in September. And so, now in December, we set the final levy, we can reduce it, but we can never raise it. So, that's what we're doing today.
Right. Next one. Authority for school levies, the school district tax, all of our cases short, voter approved or is by state, by state law. And changes that affect the twenty twenty eleven. And as you know, we had a two percent increase each year, Representative Poppy's gone now. But expenses are increasing by three and three, so let's hope we get more money, and that's why I want to be on that board.
I wish Gene would have been here for this.
Yeah, exactly, well, what's happened is that the school districts reimbursement from the state, over the last several decades, just go a little bit higher so we can see, has not kept up with the expenses of school districts. In other words, we have not been compensated with inflation the amount that it costs to educate students, right, Mel? We discussed this at the Masman meeting I attended a couple of years ago with you. So, in other words, we're on a spiral where we're not keeping up with it. Uh, that's what I'm hoping with a one point three five billion dollar surplus, the legislature will recognize that and start something else a little bit better.
But over the years, school districts have come to the voter for, uh, operating levies, operating money. And so, if you look over the course of the last twenty years, you'll see on average, those levies have increased, and that's what's filled the gap.
Right, but that's, that's not gonna look, cause that's putting a higher burden on the taxpayers in rural areas, and large suburban and urban school districts are doing a lot better. and large suburban and urban school districts are doing a lot better, and that's why I wanted to be a member of that small school districts. That order, okay. It's funny, cause my district in New Mexico was the fifth largest with a hundred and thirty million dollar budget, so on is lobbying the other direction there, so not gotta wear a different hat here. I think everybody knows what the general fund is, operating cost, salaries, benefits, utilities. Any questions, just stop this, otherwise we keep going. Okay. Uh, you put school service, community app, okay. Debt service funds, now, you want to mention how the levy's gonna drop because of debt service?
Let's do that, when we get down to the charts.
Okay, later, cause that's where our, our good news is, keep going, okay.
Right here, now, that shows what, uh, the budget is.
Next. And here's our reserve fund breakdown. Okay. And except for personnel, we're doing pretty well in all other areas. The general fund. Next. Property taxes payable, twenty twenty.
We're down just a little, right there, stop right there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, what you'll notice here is last year, we set our final levy at a million forty-nine thousand. This year, uh, we're gonna, uh, ask to set the levy at the seven hundred forty-six thousand, which is, you know, uh, just over three hundred thousand less. So the, the biggest reason there is, is if you remember three years ago, they, you know, very many people probably remember this, but when they set the final levy in December, they created a pay as you go levy for a potential bill to UNESCO for one point six million, and so they levied that December sixteen for two hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred, I believe was the number. And that money stayed in a, in a designated fund and was never, uh, uh, spent, it was never used. It sat in that, uh, designated fund balance. So now this year, the state is taking that money back, so rather than take the money back, they just reduced the levy this year and move it to unassigned and basically put it into the general fund. So that's why that number is less, now just remember, next year, it will go back up. And I don't know if it'll go back up to where it was last year or not, but it will go back up, so.
And a second reason that they go back up, as we're reviewing the process now, is Axel knows for a new parking lot and pickup drop off, and of course we'll end up increasing at that point to cover that, but that would be a year or two out, depending on when MDOT does their.
When you add that number, Steve, that was designated for the UNESCO to what they're levying this year, what's that put us at? Do you know?
No, because there, there, if, further down, we'll see another number, but there's like eighteen thousand difference, and so, it's actually, uh, two hundred and fifty something, and that, and the only thing I can figure out is that that's interest.
It has to be.
Was that, that, was that money sitting in an interest-bearing account, I'm assuming, right Mel?
Uh, oh, I don't think that they take the interest, it'll just be a, um, flat amount, but you, um, the levy is based on inflation too. And then you have property values, and there's multiple factors, that could adjust the other parts to levy.
Yep.
They also have three hundred dollars from non-moved or approved to local optional. That's why you'll see it increasing in the back.
Yep. So that's, see, that's the difference right there, that I don't understand either, Pat.
Yep.
If you look, you've got a total general fund minus two hundred seventy thousand, and you've got a proposed levy of minus three hundred, well, don't equal that, that, uh, two hundred and thirty-nine, so the actual, you got general fund adjustments, minus two fifty-seven, three oh nine. So is that, Mel, you would might know, is that two fifty-seven? Is that the two thirty-nine plus interest, do you know, or don't, maybe you're not, maybe you're not sure.
I, you know, I haven't looked at your final levy report, but there's, could be some other adjustments from the other years too, you know, the, they make adjustments, you know, uh, let's see if they have reemployment for us.
This is very complex, I remember that.
Um. I imagine there's, there's some other adjustments, but without actually pulling up, uh, thirty-some pages of the levy report.
Yep.
Um. But there's probably more, I, I, well, obviously there's more true, but yeah, without looking at it, it's been since, since September that I've looked at it, and that things will change since then. But I mean, there could be, we, we may have long-term facilities to hold out, um, and some of that could just be lowered, um. When I talked to the county before I did Southland's presentation, the average, um, increase for market values was about around five percent, and this is just a model county, I don't, I didn't check a film county. Um, and, but you have some that are a lot higher than that, and some that had decreases. So depending upon their classes and where they fit in all the, um, just use the A plus, or the A land versus the homestead plus one acre, all those different categories, it's gonna have an effect on the levy.
Okay.
Factors affecting it. And as Mel mentioned, you have multiple factors that could be a part of the reason for that difference. Some impact of the taxpayer. We'll have charts and graphs explaining this. First one, property tax comparisons for twenty nineteen versus payable twenty twenty, and you can see that they've, uh, reduced in every area, I believe, therefore, market value, homestead residential property. Okay, which should be nicely in the newspaper. That, uh, with this one, up a little bit more, a little more. Non-homestead residential property, same thing, they've decreased the orange light is more than the red showing a decrease in all those different areas of value. Next one, uh, nineteen twenty, market value, commercial industrial property, so if a company wanted to reopen a tractor supply business, we could see that that levy had reduced. Next, not to get too political. Property tax comparisons, market value apartments or, or work units, decreased in all areas. Property tax comparison of market value seasonal recreational residence property, many lake homes or anything like that, or river.
No, I, I don't know if there's any.
Lake Louise, not, isn't that.
Not, yeah, yeah, there is any, it was, and that's interesting, because northern Minnesota lake cabins are increasing like three times or four times their current property tax level. That was up yesterday. Next, haven't been to Lake Lees, I'm official, thanks. Market value of agriculture, homestead property has been reduced, and the legislatures have, you know, uh, year to the agricultural community, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to be on that board, I want to be sure they continue to do that and that smaller districts get in the air. Because I'll comment that, uh, Axel, over my two and a half, almost three years now returning to Minnesota, small school districts really are at a disadvantage because they base everything on pupil units, and we end up at the short end of the stick. And I'm kind of tired of that, I don't know if I can change it, but at least I can let them know I don't like it. Next. Property comparisons for agricultural, non-homestead property, this would be your land, okay, production taxes, when with commodities and crop prices so low, that's probably a good thing.
That's the last chart.
Yeah.
I have, Mel, I got one question, and I, I'm gonna ask you, cause I think, I think we, I know the answer, but I, I'm sure you do, but did, did our long-term bond for the media center and the ag room, did that go off this past year, right? That was, that was fulfilled and paid off the past year, right?
Uh, definitely, well, um, the, the transfer was made to clear off that account, the general fund.
Yep.
So that was made, um, actually, so that would have an adjustment on your taxes.
But, but looking at the, at the.
No, you still have your OPED levy.
Yeah, right, but looking at how much the ag property dropped, I mean, I mean, that's, that's, uh, that's sixty percent. So, I mean, scroll back up, will you, Crystal? You look at the, the non-homestead, and then keep going, you got homestead, that dropped considerably.
Yep.
And you got the recreational property, see, those taxes drops all resemble long-term bonds. And so, I'm, the thought I had is that, is that re- represent the drop in, in levy because the media center bond is paid off, that, cause that's ended last year, I think, didn't it?
Yeah, the, the actual last payments were like, uh, ten, you know, two fiscal years ago, cause then you have to leave it for a year, and then like the second year they recommend. So that was actual payments, um.
So otherwise, what explains that tremendous drop?
And they're looking at their, this is, they're looking at market value, is this statewide, or is this, what did you, like you told me?
Do you think market value did that drop?
Well, that's, well, this is market value, this is market, just Mauer County or Film County, or did they do a combination?
No, I believe Mauer, and they might have some, some builder, cause part of that county are in the district.
Well, I don't think, looking at my proposals, that my market value's dropped anything significant.
Nope, they didn't.
And so, there's gotta be a reason for that. Because we don't really have any long-term bonds that would have been affected by the.
Right, but I don't think this is taking to affect your, um, the district's amounts here, cause in the slides say, you know, there's your market value. So I don't know.
These are different things we're talking about, apples, oranges, right?
Yeah, this, whatever information the company's pulling, clone.
Yeah.
You know, without doing the presentation and working with them on it. I mean, it would be a good question to go back and assess the data that they, source of the data.
I can ask.
Ready? Okay.
And that could be, that could be just, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm surprised as well, it, it could be just Mauer County, but I'm just looking at your.
What you're saying is that could be a statewide chart.
That's it, yeah, I'm wondering if there's more to that.
Yep.
Because I, I pulled up yours, that you're taxing and the market values, and granted, right now, on the report, they have two thousand eighteen, because they don't have two thousand nineteen done yet. But they, and so that's the data that they use until nineteen's finalized, um, but the, everything went up.
Yeah.
So that's where I don't, that'd be a question to go back and.
I'll ask, I'll ask Baker Tilly.
Okay.
Ready?
Next.
I think we're at the end.
Yeah.
So.
Any questions, anyone getting? Unless otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve. Basically, what we're doing here is we're, 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 um, gonna do a resolution to approve the tax levy set for, uh, seven forty-six, we're gonna need to state that, did you get a resolution, did you, did you get a resolution?
Did we get it, did we get the document for it, or just?
Did you get the document?
There is no document.
Oh, you.
There is no document.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
If it's a resolution.
If it's a resolution, you don't have to.
You don't have.
There's no roll call.
Okay, so you simply, you simple vote.
Yep, you can do it that way.
Okay.
Yep, I want to state the, the amount and make sure that that's, uh.
Page nineteen.
Yeah, and make sure you put the whole amount in there, in the.
Here it is. So the amount that we're asking to approve is, uh, seven hundred forty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
So when we set that in September, we set the maximum, right? And what, what was the maximum number?
This number right here, that. Yep.
That was the seven hundred forty-six.
I'm pretty sure.
I don't, I don't remember what it was, it might be on the, it might be on the, but I mean, it could have adjusted, just because that's, that's really beginning a whole lot of, like this year's stuff is done, but typically, that doesn't adjust too much, so it could be a little bit different.
Okay.
But it wouldn't have been higher than that. Typically, unless, or actually, it could be because the least, the least.
No, we might have approved more.
The least levy was not on there, at that point, probably.
Hmm.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the proposed levy at seven hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Motion by Pat?
Second.
Second by Teresa, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Um, two things I would like to point out in that is, is that, just, I'd like everyone to kind of be aware that next year it will go back up because of that, uh, retiring fund from the, from the pay as you go levy from UNESCO. And the other thing I'd like you to point out is, is that there was no money sent to UNESCO, and they sent us a bill in May of twenty eighteen, we rejected it, and we have not heard back from them. So, um, will we hear back from them? I don't know, I, I kind of doubt it, I don't know why they would wait this long if they thought they were owed any money, but we haven't heard nothing back since, since that time.
Comment, Mr. Chair? Yeah, okay, my question is just that we, they also had a, a plan in place ten ago, the UNESCO was for one point six or two million dollars for some new lobbying upgrades, and, uh, they decided not to move forward with that, so they were not billed additionally for that either, that was at Butterfield Building District.
Uh, next, we move on to administrative reports, and, uh, Ray, go ahead.
Uh, again, thank you for opportunity to serve as your superintendent. Uh, we'll go first with Kim Bly, we have ordered an automatic dispenser system to treat the water in our boilers, it will automatically test and add chemicals to keep the system pH acidity and other levels, uh, uh, calcium, various other things under control, many school districts have added this feature, and I mentioned we upgraded our, our heating system at the other district last summer, so I'm familiar with it, and this time I wanted to, Tim, to discuss a little bit about what it does and how it might improve the lifetime of our heating system.
What it does is it pumps boiler chemicals into the condensate tank, and that, both boilers take on that tank as they need water. So they're both getting chemicals at the same rate. It pumps at six in the morning, noon, at eight o'clock at night, and around the total eight minutes of all three of those cycles. What it will do, it keeps your chemicals at a proper level in your water, which will make it run more efficiently, and it'll last longer.
It cut down corrosion on the boiler tubes and piping.
Right. And the pump was four hundred and nineteen dollars.
Also, it's automatic, so he doesn't have to either do it and test it and add chemicals. And we put it in, about the time we hired me here, they put it in Butterfield over just before I left.
Yeah, three amount of chemicals put it in.
Often did you have to test before?
Daily.
Daily, you did it manually and it does, it does it automatically?
It does automatically.
Tell too how, if you added things, what did you have to do?
Yeah, you have to pour it in a cup and shut it now, move it all, open that valve, and stand there and wait for twenty seconds and shut everything back up and drain it out, and you could do that every day. Once you don't know, you can put half a gallon or a gallon, you can't know until you test the water the next day. This way, it's constant.
Sounds like we should have probably did that a long time ago.
Yeah.
I did it back in two thousand eight, so I'm alive here. Thank you, Mr. Bly.
Yes.
I'm still looking at the cost of the curtain to separate the gymnasiums, if that gets done, I haven't gotten any bits back from anybody. I was thinking that would be something that could be looked at in the long-term facility master plan, and something for twenty twenty or twenty one, twenty two or whatever. That's still in the planning process, so we can have sports, don't go so late, which I mentioned before. Uh, Representative Jean Papi was here already, Jeanie. Safety committee met this morning, and we had a, a report from them, I don't know if I gave you the information on it, cause I just got ahold of it this morning. We talked about, uh, mobile llama update, uh, reading composition still looking to fill, that's, wait, that's personal court, that's, that's not helping. Reading composition still looking to fill. That's, wait, that's personal court. That's, that's not helping at any. Okay, so we looked at, uh, Tim having ice melt. He had thirty-six bags.
Sixty.
Sixty bags. New AED purchase had, has been installed. Review employee injury reports, which we had very few. Worker safety concerns around the table. We added a set of new tires on the pickup trucks so that Tim didn't spin out when he tried to plow. And, uh, and hopefully he could take care of all, all of our soap plowing. If he, he would have an option to kind of, to bring somebody in on a need basis if we needed more. The health and safety inspection, uh, went pretty well. If you add anything, if you were there, I think you're the only other person that was there besides me. Chemical inventories, does that, did that refer to the science room and cleaning up that storage room there and the swimming pool?
Yeah, the pool, mechanical area, there are chlorine and the acid in there.
Right.
And their cleaning supplies, which I have the same thing, cleaning supplies.
And we talked about it. That always happens to me in other schools previously too. We'll have to look at where they're stored and how we can take care of that. No major concerns, just some safety concerns. The AHRA inspection, which is. What's AHRA conditions?
Asbestos.
Oh, okay. Oh, I should know that. Asbestos is a baby. So that's all under control because I wanted to know because I've only been around for three months now. So it sounds like that we've been very much on top of that. We've removed everything, but there's only one hallway left. Is that correct?
Hallway in the elementary is the only one that's down there now.
Right, okay.
Everything else is gone.
Sure. And I asked him about if the board wishes we have that bid to do the tough point for the elementary school that was never carried out last year. And, uh, if you want to do that, that's not gonna affect anything. We'll do that.
Right.
Hopefully after the first of July, the new fiscal year, and there will be no needs to have that any impact on anybody. And the next meeting is gonna be spring of twenty twenty. And that's the report that we have for that.
Did he tell you about, uh, the fine the Catholic schools got in Rochester?
Say again?
Catholic schools in Rochester got fined seven thousand dollars by OSHA.
Oh, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Rochester Rurys, I think.
Because the guy was in the man lift and tipped you over thirty feet in the air. And he crushed his pelvis.
Yes.
And he was never trained how to use it. That's the fine amount.
Yeah. And then I, I opened up a charter school in Rochester back in fifteen, sixteen, before I was out in Butterfield. And there were numerous, uh, uh, how can I say it? Discretions on the part of their board and operating, illegal meetings, et cetera, et cetera. So I resigned there. I didn't want to be associated with it. And by the way, you opened bid practice and all kinds of things. So I told him if they ever trash me, my daughter's an attorney in Brooklyn. That's a little bit about charter schools and Catholic schools in Rochester. Though same between me, uh, I'm a member of the Minnesota Rural and Association. Uh, we were gonna talk about the possibility. We're not gonna do it this time about adding a dean if the board thinks it's necessary. Mr. Humberhold couldn't make it here. And it's something like when we talk about custodial, if the board is interested, fine. If the board is not, fine. It's something that I'd like you to be considering. And that's everything I have in my report except for one thing. The Navy recruiters are here recently. My mother and father are both now deceased, but Navy, uh, officers, World War Two. Go Navy. They beat Army by about thirty points. That's weekend. So I thought I'd get a little plug in there. And, uh, that's all I have. Now, Mr. Humberhold's report, which I started when I shouldn't have already. Uh, I think you have copies of it?
I don't.
I don't think so. I'll tell my copy.
Well, he said, I, reading board is still looking to fill acquisition. Uh, Mobile Mama update? I don't have the update. Something came up where you could not make it. Corey Greenwall presentation in February on the website. Student recognition is or will be up there. Is it up now? I don't. Elementary monthly, Minnesota High School quarterly. I apologize, but I, I wasn't aware exactly what I'm gonna put in this report. I'll have to ask you to update us at the next meeting. January staff development days, I do have. Math department's got a professional development day, MBE, and consortium day. I'll have one thing I'll add to it, uh, curriculum cycles for purchasing new textbooks. And then spending some time in the science classroom because we have a, a teacher in there that's not licensed in science. And I checked the textbooks because I was into the last, uh, off and on over the last two months. Today I stopped in there and they're looking at, at atomic particles. Now, in the last six or eight years, they found a new particle with a new electron, uh, microscopes and other things that we have. Something called a core. It was on the book because the book was published in two thousand five. So I would recommend to the board in the future who we can do a curriculum cycle and get some new science books. Also, the number of elements in the periodic table since two thousand five has changed, so I'd like to update that.
I think that's something Aaron looks at every year and asks the teachers to break. Yeah.
We already have a curriculum cycle. This is a result of history.
I want to get that soon. I know, I used to wear it, but I want to issue it, stake it here because I don't like using books especially. Now, history book, I don't care because history is history. But a science book is gonna change.
But Mr. History Teacher over here disagrees with you.
History, history's happening every day, so. But our history books, I think, still referred to the Cold War as like recent. There was so. We need to update it a little bit.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna trump if you talk about, if you talk about history, I have a master's degree in history. I worked in the Minnesota Council on, uh, Minnesota Council on Social Studies. I need presentations. So I'm a, I'm a history guru a lot more than a science too. But anyway, I'd like you to have that in mind. And I think that's all that we have for those who report.
Okay. One more thing I'd like you to talk a little bit about, and that is, um, Pat and I met with you and talked a little bit about, some of the things you, uh, for a contract. We haven't, we met one time and then, we're, we should try and meet again Friday, I think, if it works, Pat. But, and that, we're hoping to have something come to the board maybe in January, but go, you can.
Trump, I, I, no, this is, uh, the board has not approved it. We discussed, I, I, I mentioned to them what I was interested in and I did not ask for the board. I asked for a three-year contract and I might remind you that the board was gonna do that in November. I'm not interested in an increase except that the three percent that the teachers and other staff would have. I'd like to leave according to the number of days that I'd worked. Mileage for attending meetings because there's a lot of meetings that I drive to. And I'd like to take the district car, but I'd have to drive all the way down here and then drive all the way back to Austin. I have a cell phone that's eighty-four dollars and my school district picked that up. My last contract, which I could show to the board negotiators, picked up things like dental insurance for my wife and myself, vision. And I think in the contract, we already have a, a life policy for fifty thousand. School days, we've discussed possibly going from a point five to a point six, which instead of three days, two days, three days, two days, would be three days, three days, three days, three days. With that time, I'd be doing things like, uh, supporting Mr. Humberhold. I have a, a, a file that he gave me now to do five-minute walkthroughs with the teaching staff and support and discipline and support in other areas. And, uh, that's all that I have. And of course, the board is gonna be, we, the negotiating team, and then discuss with the board and see what the wishes of the board are. And I give, you know, copies of that.
Yep.
And I'd ask if you could, uh, discuss that at the January meeting. I'm not sure the date, nineteen through seventeen.
I think we need to probably discuss the January meeting a little bit in, under, we will under board comments, so. So is there, does anyone have any questions, uh, for, uh, Ray in regards to, um, what he's asking for?
And, and you can say, well, it's paying you more money, but I also add that I'll be working two more days. So you're giving more service and rather than just saying, hey, I wanna ten percent raise.
Yeah. Okay. I guess then if no questions, we'll move on to board comments. And, uh, one thing I got, I just want to remind the board that Dylan wants to take our picture after the meeting, so don't run off.
One of us, everyone stood there. We need an updated picture of the board for the website and then the sixth graders need it for their Minnesota project, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Could you, could I say something else to Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
The, uh, say, board conference is coming up before the next board meeting. It's the fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, January. And it's too late for people to cancel rooms, but if you're gonna attend, you know, be sure to get that date in mind. And I recommend that the board attend. And I'm gonna attend, one, because superintendents generally do attend with the board, and two, because I'm gonna have Minnesota Rural Education Association Committee. We're going to meet the last day of the conference, seven o'clock in the morning at the Orgway Center. So I'm gonna have to get up probably at six, which I always do anyway, but I'll be there meeting with them to find out what their lobbying issues are and be with the legislature for the next session. And I would recommend the board attend if you made decisions. And of course, that's your responsibility. I stay on that. I just recommend you do. Thank you.
You bet.
We're staying at the Hyatt again? That's on the Skyway?
We've never stayed at.
Never stayed at the Hyatt. It's closer to the convention center than the Hilton or other hotels. Parking is easy. It's on, it's on the far west end of the mall, Midland Mall. And if, uh, you use your, uh, Google map, it will take you into the street you're supposed to be into the parking lot. And they do have a nice restaurant.
Does anyone have any, any comments they'd like to make? Anything, talk about?
What's the, the status of the Smeck building up there? Is that opening soon or?
It's opening tomorrow.
Yeah, they're moving in.
Moving in tomorrow. Yes, sir.
Yep.
Because they were gonna advertise for custodian two something. We'll see what the market is for that. Because he couldn't find one.
Well, they're close enough to Austin where they get a bigger selection of floor.
Does anybody out there that'd like to lay as a custodian?
Anybody else got anything?
I do. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. I've already told Tim and Teresa this, but I found that all of our coaching contracts had the incorrect price on them because they didn't have the three percent increase that was supposed to go into effect for the year. So I have corrected the basketball ones already for the people who chose to take two payments in splits. So I've corrected them and they've already been paid the correct amount for December. And for January, I will be making the difference for the football and volleyball coaches that were underpaid. So in January, you might see a little bit.
Pay that retro paid.
What's that?
The retro paid, I should have included that.
It did? Okay, I'm gonna talk to you about that then. So, but it wasn't updated, so I'll talk to Mel and make sure everyone is paid correctly.
Okay. We should discuss, uh, January meetings. Uh, we have to reorganize, uh, in January. And so, uh, do, do we want to do it with the monthly meeting or do we want two meetings? And the other thing is, I would like consideration to maybe, uh, meeting a little earlier. We could do two if we met a week earlier than normal. I'm gonna be gone that week, so I, we, we're going away for, we won't be here the third Tuesday of, that was January.
January twenty.
So I would, I'm asking for consideration, maybe to set the meeting Monday night the week before or possibly Tuesday night if everybody's gonna be here. But, all right, what day are you going up? And Cassidy, you might be going up Tuesday, so you, you'll probably.
Well, I.
So then it wouldn't affect, it would affect.
Did you guys do the Tuesday night again or was it Wednesday? Because I can drive up Wednesday, Wednesday night. Yeah, because I could drive up in the morning.
Well, aren't you going to phase one?
I don't need to go, so there's no reason.
Because phase one is Tuesday night. Are you going to phase two?
Yeah.
Phase two is Wednesday morning at nine o'clock.
Yeah.
So, I mean, but we could give consideration to meeting Monday night. You know, I just, if you guys don't want to move it back a week, that's okay. And I just want it where the, that don't work.
I think, I think we should have everybody there, especially when we're gonna volunteer in assigned committees.
Yeah.
That, you know, if there's something specific that you're interested in, we don't, you know, kick one out of one and shove you on something else.
And Mr. Chair, I recommend the board do some testing for the reasons that you stated, Teresa.
So I don't know if anyone else has any conflicts with nights, you know, if we can. So the first question is, is should we have two meetings or should we combine the reorganization and do it?
I think if we move it up a week, we might as well just have it all together.
That's what I'm thinking.
I would agree with you.
Yeah.
We're looking at what dates specifically?
Well, the, I think Monday, is it the fourteenth?
The Monday is the thirteenth, Tuesday the fourteenth.
Okay. I think Monday, the fourteenth.
Thirteen.
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 Monday the thirteenth, I've got a, another board can meet on that day.
Okay, so you, that don't work for Justin. So Tuesday, the fourteenth. So that would, might be a conflict for Cassidy. It would push you pretty tight to get up there Wednesday morning.
I can get up, I, I can get up.
Unless it's storming. I know Pat and I did that.
Two years ago. Yeah.
Well, which year was it where we left home at night, went back home and left the next morning?
Yeah.
That was two years ago, I think.
Yeah.
Because I left and got up there and you guys turned around, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, we made it, we didn't even make it to grab that one. We decided that that was not a really good choice, so we went back home.
Well, could we just go a little earlier on that Tuesday instead of six thirty? That way.
I, you could stay at six thirty. I'm fine.
There is a game that night, a boys' game at home.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's gonna run into it regardless, but.
Well, do we want to do it earlier?
It might be a little bit longer of a meeting, so it might not hurt to start a little earlier.
Okay.
I can do whatever, so it's up to people that have other obligations with it.
Like five thirty? Like five thirty?
I was thinking, yeah, five, five thirty.
Yep.
Yeah.
I would, I would be okay with that.
So the fourteenth?
So Tuesday the fourteenth.
Tuesday, January fourteenth. Fourteenth at five thirty? Is that working? I mean, would that be okay with everybody?
That's fine.
This is in place of what would be?
Our regular meeting.
Regular meeting, correct.
Yeah, we'll reorganize and have our regular monthly meeting. And, and actually, to be honest with you, January, I mean, we set our, at our organizational meeting, we set our, our, what night we do it, which probably won't change, but really, it's not set for January.
No.
True.
So, now, one thing I will let you think about, Ray. We've always done the third Tuesday of the month. If you like that night, I guess it don't matter. Or is there a reason to switch?
No, I see. No reason. That's, that's policy with you people.
I'd say I'm stuck with, yeah, can we, yeah, if you're good with that, can we stick with the third Tuesday?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
Because I know your schedules are different. You set your jobs and other things according to that, so I'm fine with it.
Yep. Um, the one thing that I thought of is some of our committees, we got rid of some, combined some next, you know, from last year. Like, you know, we, I don't know if you know this, Ray, or not, but we combined, what, three or four committees into one for the long-range plan. Do we want to continue doing that or do you want to break them back out again? Because like, we can decide that night, but it's just something to think about before that night.
What we should do is, is everybody can maybe take time on their own and look at January of, of, uh, eighteen minutes and then look at January of nineteen minutes and look at the different committees.
Yeah.
And then just kind of make that decision on your own. And we could bring a list to the meeting next month of each month and then.
And make your, of course, this is depending on what your tax practice is, but I'd rather have, depending on we've got a lot of committees, so we're not having committees.
That's what we did, is pared it down last year.
Yeah.
I'd like that. I think that's a more efficient way to operate. And it takes less of your time. And we kind of get more things done in less time.
Well, then you can review and then you can make recommendations also.
I will, because I will probably recommend to keep a reasonable number of meetings.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add to that? And then otherwise, we're gonna need a motion to approve Tuesday, January fourteenth at five thirty.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated board meeting.
Motion by Cassidy?
Second.
Second by Angie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Um, any more board comments? Any more discussion?
I'd like to continue to thank Nathan and Teresa for doing the, uh.
That's not me, that's him.
Well, you're part of them, so, uh, that looks really good. I've seen pictures on Facebook of those, uh, of those bleachers. Those are gonna look really, really nice over there. So, a lot better than, than what the ones were over there.
Yeah.
I lift them up and they just bust and crumble, so, uh, definitely some improvements.
Yeah. That's, uh, really nice.
Good boy.
Maybe you could add one other quick thing last of all. I know that the, when one superintendent's license expired, he didn't tell anybody? Oh, if in the system, you're required to. Oh, with the new system, you're required to have a hundred and twenty-five CE units, and I have a hundred eighty, it's all approved, and I just have to pay the fee in January, and I'll be removed through twenty twenty-five, June third. And I'll have a copy of the license before it impresses.
So, if there's anything else, otherwise we'll look for motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Angie?
Oh, second.
Second by Cassidy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry, uh, eight o'clock, meeting adjourned.
Is popcorn still on?